Good evening, everyone. We're going to call for order, the reorganization meeting for this evening. Roll call, please.
Here. President.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Okay, we're going to do our opening prayer for this evening. Uh, this evening's opening prayer is going to be done by Caleb Ramey from, uh, the Clayville Christian Church.
Hello again, everyone. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity and your... Can you hear me now? All right. Gotta make sure you're hearing. Well, I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here. Um, it's always a blessing to be able to come and open prayer for anything, and especially for something as so vital as, uh, this school board for the children. Um, that's our future, and it's, it's important. I just wanted to read a verse. Um, from my understanding, you've got a few new members, and so I wanted to read a couple verses from scripture. Isaiah forty-three, starting at eighteen, says, "Remember ye not the former things, neither consider the things of old. Behold, I do a new thing; now it shall spring forth, shall ye not know it? I will even make it in the wilderness, in the desert." When you're putting God first, He's going to make a way, and He's going to make it evident. You just have to be willing to follow through with that. So let's go ahead and open with prayer. Dear me Father, Lord, we thank you. We praise you for this wonderful day you've given us. God, I thank you for this board. I thank you for the new members. I pray that you would help to continue to lead, guide, and direct them in all that they do, and help them to remember to put you at the forefront. And Lord, I pray that you would bless that tremendously going forward. Lord, we thank you, and we praise you in your precious heavenly name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, would everybody join me for the pledge of allegiance?
................................................................................................
Okay. Okay, so at this time, we're going to take public comment on agenda items for the reorganization meeting and regular school board meeting.
Mr. Vice President, there is no public comment.
Okay. Here does the floor. So at this time, we're going to do the presentation, um, certificates of election. Okay? Thank you. Congratulations?
Yes, congratulations.
And now we are going to have the, uh, oath of office.
Mr. President, if I may, there's a confusion with, uh, with the signing. There is one public comment.
Okay, very good. Want to go back to that then?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Ashley Lawson. That'd be East Finley Township.
Hi, my name's Ashley, and I don't have anything to say about what's on the agenda. I wanted to bring something to the board that's not on the agenda about the Clayville Elementary School, um, safety protocols for the morning bus run.
I'm sorry, I can't. Can you check and see if my mic's on?
It's on, but it's not, like, this time of year. This would be for agenda, for the reorganizational one, like...
I, okay, I don't have anything about the agenda.
It would be, if it's for the next meeting, the public meeting, um, we're going to a monthly meeting, then there's a time for non-agenda items at the end.
We have two places for public comments. At the beginning of the board meeting, we take public comment on the agenda items so that it can help inform the board about the public feelings on things that we're going to discuss on our agenda.
Right.
And then at the end of our board meeting, we have a whole nother spot for public comment for non-agenda items.
Okay.
Would you mind hanging around until the end?
I don't mind. I just wanted to lay that out, that I do have public comment for something outside of the agenda, so...
Yeah, can we have you come back at the end?
Yeah.
To stay tough. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is it something that, because you're talking about with Clayville, and I remember your email, is it something that isn't public?
I don't want it to be, yet. I would like to...
How do we address that then, if it's public comment time? Do... I don't, I don't know how we would do this.
If there is some, I'm not familiar with what the matter is. Maybe, um... Could I talk to a couple board members in between when we recess for re-learners and the voting meeting to see what type of matter it is, and to see the best way to make sure we get you heard?
Yeah, without violating any confidentiality for you. Yeah, yeah.
You said a student. Involved a student.
It involves multiple students, so...
Okay, yeah. That can't be public.
Right. Let me check in with you in between the two meetings, too, and I can talk to Mr. Thomas and...
Yeah, thanks for talking this out, because I'm not sure where it lies, and, um, at least it's on today's, um, agenda.
Just so you're aware, we actually have two meetings tonight. The first meeting is a reorganizational meeting...
Yeah.
That we have to do. Then the second one is a regular meeting for December, so we would have you at the end unless there's other things taking place to have you another time.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. I'll stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Sorry for the confusion.
Chief, are you going to introduce, uh, Mr. Bruner, or do you want me to read it out here? Okay, very good.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, introduce, uh, the Honorable John P. Bruner, Master of District Twenty-seven, Three Ten.
Um, Doctor, and to the appointed and the elected officials, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this very special evening, and, uh, special in terms of service to, service to the community. Uh, before we get started with the ceremonial aspect, or the oath aspect of this, I wanted to, uh, read something prepared here. "To the veteran and newly-elected McGuffey Board of Directors, I offer my sincere appreciation to each of you. You had the courage to step forward and make a difference in your community. With this rewarding position I imagine can bring on occasional stress, handling student and staff issues, staying current on evolving educational needs, addressing yearly financial challenges, and dealing with some who may agree to disagree with your decisions. It takes courage. It takes courage to make tough decisions, especially decisions that might not be popular with certain groups. And so, again, I thank you for everything that you do in terms of, uh, stepping forward and being proactive and helping out your community. You should be very proud of that. Not from the historical aspect, we're going to be getting into the oath of office, and I'd like to educate the new members, the two new members, okay, um, in terms of the history of raising your right hand to be sworn in while taking the oath. The practice of raising your right hand dates back to Roman times and medieval courts, where raising the right hand was a gesture of truth and honesty. You see, in ancient Rome, individuals convicted of perjury were punished by having their right hand branded with the letter P, so they could see if you did something wrong. Later, in seventeenth-century London, judges required individuals to raise their right hand, so the quickest check for any mark's T was thief and was murder. And that same practice carried over here in America, in colonial America, where criminals were branded with the T for thief, the M would be branded for manslaughter, and a B for burglary. And over time, that gesture of raising your right hand evolved into the general symbol of sincerity and truthfulness, and it has become a standard part of our oath-taking ceremonies. And, um, now is the portion that the, uh, four individuals, the two new elected school board members, and the two that won reelection, if you would come up in, in a, in a manner that you wish to, and then we could, uh, we can take that oath. Okay, and if we could raise that right hand, and I, I can attest there's no branding marks, uh, oh, yeah, they're covering his, so... And, uh, I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. You should be very proud. And I have here the forms, and, um, I didn't know where you wanted them to sign them at, or...
Okay, because I did all the stamps and everything there, so then all they have to do is skate.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So at this, at this time, we're going to take nominations for a temporary president?
I nominate Mr. Rebecca Hall.
Second.
Second.
Any discussions? Okay. So, next time we just, three, actually, you need to do that then?
Need to vote on it.
Okay. So do I have to request a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion to close the nominee, so that the nominations would be closed for temporary president.
So moved.
Second.
And then, when you're standing here, or we just approve you to do that by that vote?
Uh, I will just temporarily take this seat as a president until we have an election. We weren't a permanent president. Just to let the public know, this is a board meeting where we reorganize, although we call it a reorganization meeting. We, at this meeting, elect a, um, a president and a vice president.
We didn't actually vote on that, probably, since it's... In three, temporary presidents were, were we to approve it?
Yeah, someone, uh, made the motion, and then we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any, uh, anyone abstaining?
All right, we'll be going ahead.
Thank you, Charlie.
We're excited. Uh, so as a temporary president, I'm going to call for nominations for our president for the McGuffey School Board to be in due year. Uh, if there is more than one nomination, an election must be conducted. Is there any nomination?
I would like to nominate Monique Frye.
I nominate Chad Thomas.
All right, so I have Mr. Leisure nominating Mrs. Frye, and Mrs. Stingle nominating, uh, Mr. Thomas.
Make a motion, nominations be closed.
Okay. Um, to move forward, we have two individuals on, up for president. Uh, we could do this a couple different ways. Um, first... So we could, um, start with Mr. Leisure, he was the first to be nominated. Um, with roll call though, or we can go around the table, which is what I prefer, and you each should state who you're voting for between, um, Ms. Frye and Ms. Thomas. Uh, those accomplish what we need to accomplish. Um, but that's my preference, is to go around the table with a roll call vote.
So if the, the board members will say the name?
Of the individual they would like to be president. So you'll either be saying you would like, um, Mrs. Frye or Mr. Thomas. Any questions on how we're doing that?
Would that be considered like a motion and a second, when we deal with this stuff first?
If you would, yeah, if you prefer to do this a different way, go ahead.
No, no, that's not it. But just as far, like, does anybody else have anything to say? So for me, I'm willing to serve. Like, it's called upon, but if, Monique, if you're super passionate about it, and you would say, boy, I would love to do it, then I'll vote for you. As far as that goes.
I think it's always good to have a choice.
It is good to have a choice.
And then number two, if you do vote for me, I will not be making a speech at the graduation ceremony. Or for the first day that the teacher presents. So, consider that.
Oh, man. The president can always delegate.
Always delegate.
You don't, every kid has a responsibility. So, please consider that in your choice.
All right, roll call then. Ms. Frye.
Mrs. Frye.
Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Langer.
Mrs. Frye.
Mr. Morant.
Mrs. Frye.
Ms. Stingle.
Uh, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Thomas.
I think I'm going to vote for Monique.
Mr. Burkle.
Mr. Rowe.
Mr. Thomas.
Good for you, lady.
Thanks.
All right, five remain.
Are we slopping, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, huh?
Oh. Thank you. Nice. Oh, okay. I didn't even pull mine up, so... Oh.
Still didn't finish. Probably pull mine up. Forever.
All right, at this time, we will take nominations for vice president. I nominate Chad Thomas.
Make a motion for Mrs. Urbarnik as vice president.
Are there any other nominations?
You don't have to second those, right?
All right, at this time, we request a motion to end nominations for vice president.
So moved.
Second. All right. And we'll do the same, roll call for vice president as well. Ms. Jackson.
Chad Thomas.
Mr. Leisure.
Mrs. Urbarnik.
Mr. Morant.
Mrs. Urbarnik.
Ms. Stingle.
Chad Thomas.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Burkle.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Rowe.
Mrs. Urbarnik.
Mr. Huber.
Mrs. Urbarnik.
Ms. Frye.
Mrs. Urbarnik.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
So traditionally, the vice president sits with us through this, so that's what we have to change.
Now, with the solicitor, do we take nominations as well? Does, it's not written that way?
No.
No. Gotcha. Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we keep Mrs. Hall from vice, or Clark and Kramer as our solicitor for the ensuing year.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to elect the current solicitor, um, as this, to retain the current solicitor as the solicitor pending the decision to search for a new solicitor. The original motion was for Mr. Leisure to appoint the current solicitor as the solicitor for the ensuing year. I made a motion to amend the motion to retain the current solicitor pending the outcome of a decision to search for a new solicitor.
What's that?
Uh, I'll, I'll just, yeah.
So that, we would vote on that amended motion first, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that was to appoint the current solicitor, Mrs. Heaton Hall from Whiteford Clark Kramer, pending the decision from this evening's RFP decision.
Basically.
Correct?
Okay. And/or if the decision is made to accept RFPs, that whole process and the outcome thereof.
Okay, so they would not...
Which is why I said pending the outcome of a decision to search for a new solicitor.
So what happens if, or if we decide to...
Well, keep in mind, first of all, I would just remind everybody that the solicitor serves at the board...
Yeah.
Like, so even if you were appoint her for the year at any point on either side, that can be...
Right. I think that's why I'm confused about the motion, because it was, that's how I understood it to be. So what happens then if, if we decide to do the RFP?
Mm-hmm.
Or if we don't decide to do the RFP, Rebecca Heaton Hall would still be our solicitor, correct?
Correct.
Until first time we hire the new solicitor, yes.
Which is the way I was...
So we need to vote on her, whether we approve the motion or not.
I understand. I, I was understanding it to be pending the decision to...
My exact wording was pending the outcome of the board's decision to search for a new solicitor.
Right.
Of the entire...
Right. So if we decide, the way I understood it was if we decided to, I'm just clarifying, going to make sure I understand. The way I understood that was if we decided to put the RFP out for other councils, then that would...
My motion is for her to be appointed as the solicitor pending the outcome of a decision to search for new solicitor, meaning therefore, if the board decides to accept RFPs, going through that process, interviewing, choosing new solicitors, she would retain the solicitor until the completion of that process, and we would either hire her or hire a new solicitor.
Understood. It, to me, I read it or understood it as completion of the agenda, the regular board agenda this evening with the RFP. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we take a roll call, or are we just all those in favor?
I would, I would call a roll call.
Roll call it? Okay.
And yes is to...
Yes would be to the amended motion, the way it's worded. No would be to just appoint Rebecca Hall for the ensuing year, correct?
And no would be against that emotion, and then we'd have to go back and vote on the other motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, gotcha.
Mm-hmm. No.
Mr. Morant.
No.
No.
Ms. Jingle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Burdell? Mr. Grove?
No.
Mr. Hoover?
No.
You did.
Five.
Mrs. Erbarnik, either-
I did, Ms. Frye didn't. I did, so, and-
Somebody did.
It's okay, I'm enough.
Five, four.
Okay, so now we're back on this, on the amended motion, so now- Right, that failed, so now we've-
Vote on the motion.
Little motion, okay. All right.
And the original motion was to appoint Mrs. Hall from Weiss, Burkhart, and Kramer as the solicitor for the ensuing year.
Yes. Okay. And-
Roll call, please.
Do the roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Burdell?
No.
Mr. Grove? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. No.
No.
Yes.
We didn't have any discussion, and I even wanted to have some discussion.
Can we discuss?
We can discuss it, it's a maybe, 'cause on the next, it's a regular meeting, we're going to discuss taking RFPs.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Um- Right, let's pass this. Okay, that's the B, okay, so we're on day one.
No. We're on-
Annual retainer.
Thank you. They're all running together, I apologize. All right, so now we are, um, going to take action on the annual retainer. Um, this is to approve the fixed annual retainer and/or hourly billing rate of the solicitor and legal counsel to the McGuffey School District for the ensuing year as follows. A retainer of seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, up to two board meetings per month at that rate. The rate for an attorney, one hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour. Financing situations, case by case basis, flat fee paid at closing, and paralegal services, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents per hour. A motion is required to set the cost for the solicitor and legal counsel to the McGuffey School District for the ensuing year.
So moved.
And I would like to pass that at the same rate that we did this year, there's no increase.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Grove?
So this would be to- Accept it as it is in, in our agenda. It would be to approve the fixed retainer, um, the rate for the attorney, the financing situations, and the paralegals. A yes would be to treat that, a no would be not this.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. No.
No.
Mr. Burdell? Frye?
Yes. All right. All right, now we are on item J one, authorize officers of the board to draw orders. Um, the recommended action, authorize the officers of the board to draw orders for payrolls and for payment of bonds, interest, utilities, and other pertinent bills as they come due. Motion is required authorizing officers of the board to draw orders for payrolls and for payment of bonds, interest, utilities, and other pertinent bills as they come due. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension? All right. All right, um, we were provided with the, um, annual schedule of board meetings for our view. Uh, they were also available to the public, and, um, we need a motion to accept those as they are, um, for the ensuing year, um, our monthly meetings.
I'm gonna move for that, so that we can discuss.
I'll make a motion that we- Go with the provided list for our meetings for the ensuing year.
Okay.
I just made that motion.
So we need a second.
Ten minutes, ten minutes, a second.
All right. All those in favor?
Well, I'd like to discuss them first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like us to consider, first of, I have two things, number one, um, the current committees, which we only have the one as of right now, the policy committee, typically in a reorganizational meeting, the policy committees would renew, whether they would be, um, reorganized as well, your committees would. Um, I think it would behoove us to go ahead and approve the dates for the policy committees, um, and for the, and for the time to be determined once we know who's on the board, that is the time that's convenient for all of them. Four P.M. is not always convenient, it's close to, but still within the regular working day, and if you have board members who are going to serve, that might exclude them, and that's not the purpose. Purpose is not to exclude board members based on a meeting time. I think we could go ahead and pass the dates, and, a- and, and also that if you publish at the same time, so the time for the meetings would have to be decided before we publish, so that we aren't paying for the publishing for all of them at the same time, if that makes sense.
It does, that's our next item.
Yes.
Yes, we're on number two, this is just our regular-
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
I'm just saying that while we're talking about schedules, and the other thing I had was, I don't see a number four, and I know that, um, Mrs. Harper talked, you had talked about forming a budget committee. Are we not doing that as of yet? Or are we gonna have to pay for that advertising of those public meetings separately later? Or should we go ahead and form that committee this evening and set those dates, the time, that time?
Um, so, yes, motion to amend the agenda. All those in favor, I think technically should be open to comment, because we're adding the agenda.
Just so that we're on the same page for these three, 'cause they're all gonna kinda go together.
Right.
So the motion is-
Right. So are you making a, a motion to add that?
Not yet, I don't think, when you get there.
amended motion.
You can.
Okay, I think we can take them one at a time, I just wanted to make sure that we have that out there before we start taking action on all of them.
Okay. All right, so Board of Director meetings scheduled, um, as it is here listed, committee meetings at six, and regular meeting directly after, um, all those in favor?
Wait, I have one more question. Could we check when Holy Week is and when the board meeting calls, 'cause that was a bear of a question.
April fifteenth, Easter's April fifth.
Okay, so we're good.
I think Easter's April fifth.
This year it fell, the board meeting fell in the middle of Holy Week, and that was challenging for a lot of us, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm good.
It was only before the fair, before the Washington County Fair, under six involved it.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of our Board of Directors meeting schedule?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extension? All right, thank you. Now, our policy committee meeting schedule, um, it was available to the public, also presented to us here this evening. Um, our policy committee meeting, second Tuesday of the month, um, currently, they are set to schedule to start at four P.M. Um, I, I agree, sometimes that can be tough to me, um, but currently, we're, we're voting to accept them as is.
I make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay.
Just for the time, that the time be decided once the new policy committee has been determined, and it's a time that's convenient for all of them. But with the understanding that that decision will be made so that these can be published at the same time as the regular monthly board meetings. Gosh, that was a lot in one meeting.
Yeah. All right.
We're gonna make sure you cover all the bases, right?
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the motion for the policy committee meeting schedule to include, um, amend, to amend the time once the committee is formed, so that those members can decide what time would fit for their schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension? All right.
Now we would take, I make a motion to adjen, to- Now, isn't this where it would be?
Day one, I see it.
Oh, you missed number one, I'm a-
Yep, okay, all right, we're gonna backtrack a little bit.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm used to looking at this on the computer instead of printing it out, so I apologize. All right, we're gonna go back to item K one, meetings conducted in accordance with board policy. The recommended action is to approve, approve all the meetings, be conducted in accordance with board policy, a motion is required. All those in favor?
Well, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension?
Okay, now I think we're gonna make a motion to adjen, to, a motion to amend the agenda, sorry, to include policy committee meeting, or budget, not policy, budget. I made a motion, I'm sorry, I made a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
We already voted on that. Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, then we backtracked. And I got confused too, Mrs. Frye. No, well, we, we passed, I think what got all the votes was to change the time to whatever the- Yeah, I thought we voted on the- Well, no, 'cause it was, the, the motion was to accept the schedule but change the time. Did I not say that clearly enough, Mrs. Frye? No. It basically dies because the new one passed.
All right.
Now we've made a motion to amend the agenda.
Right.
To include a budget committee meeting schedule. Mrs. Harper talked? Yes.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter to you. Okay. No, it's okay. All right, motion to amend the agenda to add the formation of a budget committee. We need a first and a second.
Wait, that wasn't my motion. I did the schedule. Do we need a motion to form it too?
Yes, that would have to be added to the agenda.
Yes.
Do you wanna do that first? So I make a motion to amend the agenda to include forming a budget committee. Do we have a second on that second?
All those in favor, can I ask? Oh, discussion, I'm so sorry.
I know last year when we formed the policy committee, Dr. Ober, we had talked about maybe considering other options for committees. Um, I'm glad we're adding budget. Do we have any other thoughts about agenda, committee, um, and curriculum committee? Branching out, maybe, I, I know that's kinda jumping in with both feet, we wanted to see how the policy committee would go, but I think it's gone swimmingly because it's been really helpful with moving forward on our policy.
At the same time, do we wanna like, take on so much that it's-
That's why I'm asking.
I think the budget committee is a huge step.
My, my next recommendation for the board is, let's see how this goes, I think it will go well, but I, I've always said, I think the next thing we should tackle-
Is the personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah. I had it on there too, but I didn't. Personnel, agenda, and curriculum are three.
I, I personally would, I personally would recommend the President and Vice President to get back to us on what items they think, and what committees that you think that we need, and then we can discuss them at a later time.
The problem is that is-
And we don't need to advertise anything until we figure them all out, I guess would be the best way.
Well, you have to advertise them, because the first meetings are in January, and they have to be by law advertised before.
Right, if I'm not mistaken, you're saying to form the committee first before even putting together a schedule, and then once we form committees, we can then post the schedules?
I, I think the President and Vice President and Dr. Ober need to figure out what committees you wanna have, so that we know what they are.
We can't form committees at any point, correct?
Correct, and then you're gonna pay to advertise for those meetings all separately.
Sure.
So if you do it all in one step, advertising is expensive, and the law is very clear about how you advertise, um, and it hasn't exactly kept up with the times, and it's costly, correct, Mrs. Harper talked? Um, and looking at the budget that we have, I think it would behoove us to not wait, and to take care of them so that they can all be published at the same time, the schedules. Um, otherwise, you're gonna have to pay for them individually, that's gonna be a huge expense.
So do we want to talk, talk about it now then, this evening, and?
I think we should do it at the end of the next meeting, under open items to discuss.
Okay.
Because this is a reorganizational meeting, and that's just my opinion, but-
But typically, formation of committees takes place at the reorganizational meeting.
It can, but we can organize it anytime.
Typically, it takes place, 'cause you're reorganizing.
My recommendation would be to start with the budget committee. Personnel is going to play a big role in the budget committee, 'cause the majority of our expenditure, salary, and benefits. Yes. And I would also recommend forming the committee, and then once I know who is part of the committee, we can then set the day and time that best fits their schedules. Do it quickly, so that we can advertise all at the same time.
And while this has all been very helpful, I will just remind you, point of order, there typically is not a discussion after a motion to amend.
Typically not. Let's move over to the motion to amend, and then we can do the motion to add budget committee, if you wanna add more committees, we can do that too now. Okay. All right, so we have a motion to form the budget committee.
Um, I have another question.
Yes.
Let's say that we would make a, add a H.R. committee, add a, any kind of committee, and then we post and advertise. Does that mean those committees then have to meet, or can we cancel those once they're advertised?
You could cancel. You could cancel.
Does the advert, does the cancel need to advertise?
I, they don't have to be formally advertised that they're canceled, we can put it on our website.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to form the budget committee and create a schedule of meetings that will be advertised. Um, we have the motion and the second, correct? Yes? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension? Motion carried, all right.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to create a personnel committee, and a schedule of meetings and times to be published at the same time as the rest of the schedules. of meetings and times to be published at the same time as the rest of the schedules.
Second. All right. All right, so we have a motion to create a personnel committee and schedule of meetings that will be advertised. We have a first and a second, um, any...
I have a question. Um, we're forming these committees, but we don't know who's on them, so how are we gonna figure out when the time is that they're gonna happen?
Point of order. All we're doing is forming committees right now. We're adding them to the agenda, and then, Mr. Leader, I think you're gonna come together quickly after this meeting, get the time, so then you can advertise, it's time to date.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to amend the agenda to form a personnel committee and create a schedule of meetings that will be advertised?
Along with the others.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension? All right. So, do we do that, like, do we do that now, but first, we open the floor for...
That's true, for public comment.
For the public comment. Okay. All right, all right, we're going to open the floor up for public comment on the two, um, additional items that were added to the agenda this evening. Is there anybody that would like to speak? All right, thank you. Okay, so now, we'll form committees?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so, we have three here, um, we have our policy committee meeting, we have our budget committee, and then we have our personnel committee. Um, I know in the past, we have accepted, um, those who'd like to volunteer, I think that is a preferred way to go. I have a question about forming committees before we move forward with that. My question is, when it comes to, once, once we have our volunteers on the committee, um, how are, how are the committee members designated, that we know there's going to be a chairperson?
Yes.
Is that something, I know that previously, it was an appointment, um, is it something that the whole board should vote on, is there other ways of doing that, how does that work?
You know, are so often, the board will just gauge interest to see if there is somebody who wants to be a chair.
Okay.
Often for committees, not everyone wants to do that, and now, if we have multiple people wanting to be the chair, then, then we have an issue to deal with as a board, but I would just see if we wanna gauge interest, see who would like to be a chair, and who would be part of that committee.
Okay.
Um, and I personally would suggest, um, having less than a quorum there, so each committee having four people. Typically, we go with three, that way, if the, 'cause the president...
That's true.
...can attend any meeting.
Yes.
And so, if the president chooses to attend, then, if there's four, and the president attends, now we're quorum.
Right.
So, if we stay with three, and the president chooses to attend, then there's not a problem with quorum.
Mine too.
And the other thing I would kind of keep in mind is, the idea of the committees isn't that you have the same people on every committee.
Right.
It's an insular kind of way to do it, the idea is that the, the people volunteer, you know, like, I know, Mr. Hoover and Saffy have both backgrounds in, in finance, so, budget committee seems like a, an easy one, if you'd be willing, you know, or, you know, kind of so that we have a variety of input of nine of us on committees. Which is a suggestion.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll do them in the order of which they're on the agenda now. Um, we'll start with the policy committee, um, I do have, well, no, I don't have a question about that, 'cause I can attend it any later than the president, so...
Yeah, you can.
Perfect, all right, so, um, is there any interest in anybody...
I would like to stay on the policy committee.
Okay. All right, anyone else? I'll be there.
While I enjoyed my time, I realized policy is not my real health. It's, I'm a very black and white person, and there's a lot of gray.
You know, I like policy that way.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick to my strengths.
Yeah. Was there anybody else who's interested in sitting on the policy committee? Currently, we have Sony volunteering, I will be there, um, I already was sitting on the policy committee, I enjoy that, and I intend to, um, continue that role. Um, again, we typically, we can have at least the four, so there's room for three others if anybody is interested.
Let me just guess, you have two others?
No, I, I would say one other, 'cause we've said three...
Two, two others, because it's me and you, two others.
Put the total four.
Put the total to four.
Oh, well, typically, we go with three, and on that way, the president counts as a four, okay.
Right, I'm just saying, I'll be there, so I'm definitely a second person.
Um, it'd be nice to have at least one more.
Right, I agree, so if anybody is interested, now, if it's something where if nobody shows interest, now they can come back later and say, hey, I'm interested in this, and they can just, there's no formal...
Because you don't have to advertise who's on the committee, so...
Okay, that's, that is fine, but I would encourage, policy committee is an extremely important committee, you know, to show direction for the school district, if anyone would like to do that, or any new members, I'm looking around, that is a great committee to be on. All right, well, we will leave that where it stands, if anybody shows interest, we...
While we're discussing that, I'd be interested in retaining the chair.
Okay.
And I will share out in my writing up the words, again, each of these, uh, you have an issue after this, it's brought back to me, and I will put you on the board, I'll put you on the false, or, they didn't mean to report.
Thank you. Okay, um, on to, uh, the budget committee, same rules, we wouldn't want more than four people, so we would, um, accept volunteers, at least three volunteers to sit on that committee if there are any.
I'll get it.
Okay.
Mr. Hoover, did I see your hand?
Uh, uh, related to...
Yes, I will deserve one of them.
All right. Perfect, okay, now, out of the three of you, is there any interest in one of you, from one of you, in being the chair for that committee?
Who's the third one? I got Mr. Hoover and Mr. Burgold.
And Mr. Laeger.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would recommend Mr. Hoover, he has vastly more experience in finance than anybody else that I'm aware of here. He's a business manager.
Welcome to the board, Mr. Hoover.
Are you ready for that?
I guess.
Okay. All right. Okay, perfect, now, we are on to our personnel committee. Um, as mentioned, same rules apply, um, at least three to show interest, and then he does it, okay? All right.
If no one else is interested, I will, as well, I don't wanna be on two committees, but if no one else is interested.
Okay. Is anybody else interested, personnel committee? Mr. Laeger? All right. All right, any others?
That's three, right?
I'm sorry?
That's three, it's Mrs. Barney, Mrs. Jackson, and Mr. Laeger.
All right, so we do have two, um, for sure, that would like to participate with the personnel committee, and Mrs. Jackson has mentioned she would if nobody else, would you still like to, even though we have three others?
I think it's always good to have three, because it's an odd number, and you can have a conversation.
Okay. All right, perfect, okay, so we have formed the three committees, um, now, we can go back to...
Wait, were you gonna ask for an interest in chair for the personnel?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, is there anybody interested in chair for the personnel committee? I would recommend Melissa.
I would too.
Let them know that. All right, perfect, yes. Policy committee, all right. Yes, Mrs. Jackson would like to retain it. Did you show any interest in being chair? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, since we have passed that up.
Hey, I'm going for the committee, we started that.
Okay, all right, so we have formed those committees, um...
I'm sorry, I missed the chair for the personnel.
Um, Mr. Barne.
Mrs. Barney.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we have our policy committee, we have Mrs. Jackson as our, um, chair, we have, um, Mr. Burgold on the policy committee, you know, I can attend any of them, but I'll for sure be there for that one as well. And then, um, for our budget committee, we have Mr. Burgold, Mr. Laeger, and Mr. Hoover, and Mr. Hoover is listed as our chair. And then, our personnel committee, we have, uh, Mrs. Barne, Mr. Laeger, and Mrs. Jackson, with Mrs. Barne as our chair. Now, we will go to the times of the meeting, um, and when we should, all of those meetings, um, we'll start, we'll, we'll just go right back up to our policy committee, just because we'll just keep doing them in that order. Um, I agree, four o'clock can be a little hard to reach, um, it can be tough at times. I also would like to be respectful of our administration's time as well, and not make it too late. Um, I'm fine with it staying at a 4:00 P.M., only because I know I can make it, um, but a little later would be a little more beneficial for me and my family. Um, I'm open to anybody's suggestions about what time we should form them. I think it helps that we're doing these all on different days, so even though we may end up with multiple meetings, um, doing it a little bit later may not, may not be daunting. Um, I would like to keep it the second Tuesday of the month, for me, if that works for everybody else, but I'm open to suggestions on what we do with the, with the policy committee moving forward.
I'm good with the second Tuesday of the month, I think that we've established that, and I don't mess with that if we don't have to, um, but I do think we should adjust the time, even if it's... I'm open, I mean, I could, excuse me, um, I personally am gonna have a schedule change, starting in January, I won't be able to make it past four, um, if you can possibly do 4:30. Five is probably more realistic, but I, to be respectful of the administration's time as well, I can make 4:30 work if we need to, Mr. Burgold, I don't know where you are with your...
How about, Dr. Ober and Mrs. Seibert, any, you think?
We're a little bored.
Well, not exactly, 'cause we said, you know, we, we definitely want your input as well.
Again, I'm just, I'm not gonna say for, for more, but it is a long day, we have free space, so that the closer you make to four o'clock helps us.
So, we wanna say 4:30?
But, again, what works for you guys will make it work, I hope that will make it work. For, for three o'clock, maybe, that is, that is great, so if it's 4:30, that's great, I appreciate consideration for these.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I would agree with the 4:30, go ahead.
My question would be, does Dr. Ober and, or have to attend all of them, or, I mean, if we have three different committees, it's gonna take a considerable amount of time, and, uh, Mrs. Ober, I, I don't know, I'm...
Well, I would think for the budget committee, it would make sense to me that Mrs. Harvard talk could attend that, and thank you, Mr. Ober, and I don't know necessarily that Mrs. Seibert needs to attend all of them.
No, no, I, I, so, let me just, just from my perspective, I certainly has to go through budget season, wanna be part of the budget year, but, um, personnel, that's what that leads, so that would be, I think, I appreciate the consideration, it is whatever works best for board, will be more important.
Thank you. All right, so are we in, is the policy committee in agreement that 4:30 would be an agreeable, so it works? Yeah, we're in, okay, all right, so, all right, we'll move on to our budget committee, we have Mr. Burgold, Mr. Laeger, Mr. Hoover, um, we...
Mrs. Harvard talk.
We need to, um, decide a date and time on when to meet for those? Wasn't really planning on that.
So, I have a recommendation on that, because we definitely went through, make sure that none of these dates are expected with the calendar, so, uh, could we give it up straight to look at both budget and personnel, us, and then see back to the, the policy committee, the, the two committees, and give you the dates and the time? Can we talk about the timeline?
No, I, I would think we could do it all at the time, and whoever's on the committee can get together after this meeting, when you come up with the date and figure it out.
And make a decision before we advertise all of them.
Yes.
Yeah, I would think that's good.
Rather than doing it all at once.
So, we are not deciding dates for that?
Or time.
Or time, until you all look at your schedules and see, okay, you'll provide suggestions to the members of the committee.
What we'll do is, we'll look at, um, since we are doing the policy committee, the week before the board meeting, we'll make sure we look at everything as of the week before the actual board, so, we'll get Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, anything, and then just make sure it, um, goes with the calendar, which is...
Okay, does that sound good with our committee members, like, the, the board?
Yeah, I think we need the leadership over them, the superintendent, business manager, one that can make it.
All right, um, so we're in agreement as well for the personnel committee, we'll do the same thing, we have our committee, okay? Excellent, all right, now, we are moving on to appoint, um, appointment of our representatives, we have the P.S.B.A. liaison, um, this past year, it has been Mr. Shingle. Um, is anybody interested? I know every year, you say, not really, but I'll do it anyways, and here we are another year later, so...
I can enjoy doing it, it's, it's been good, I, I'm surprised, but it has been, but, um, I, you have done it before, if you have...
If you wanna keep it, just keep it.
Uh, is anybody else interested in doing it?
I think Mrs. Shingle's done an awesome job of informing the board of everything at the end of the meetings, and I, I, I have all the faith in you in that position.
All right, okay. I make a motion to appoint Betty Shingle to serve as the P.S.B.A. liaison for the insurance year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Shingle as the P.S.B.A. liaison, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? All right, motion carried, okay, Western Area Career and Technology Center, um, we would appoint, um, somebody to serve as the Western Area Career and Technology Center liaison, that is where I currently sit, um, I am still interested in that, if you all will have me, but if somebody else is also interested, I am fine with allowing others.
And we typically appoint an alternate as well.
Yes, there is an alternate that would have to be chosen, they, they need to have. Thank you. All right.
Who's the alternate?
Erin was, yeah.
Is somebody interested in being the alternate?
So, just to explain that to our newer board members, the alternate is there only if I'm unable, there was only one time that I wasn't gonna be able to last year, I, I admit, um, it is, um, it's a, it's a great environment, um, a little different than what we see here, because you have nine different school districts that attend these meetings, they all have a representative from the school district, um, but, I mean, it's, it's not been troublesome or anything like that, so if anybody's interested in that, you would only be sitting as the alternate, so it would be when I could not attend, I would let you know, and then you would...
When are their meetings?
We haven't met yet, too, go over next year, right, right, they are on, let me say, just, let me look at my calendar really quickly. Third Wednesday of the month, they do not have a meeting in, in the month of July, though. So, if anybody is interested in that, that would be great, I don't, how would we handle that if there's no alternate, that would, there's just...
We wouldn't have anybody there.
Okay.
Well, we, we, they call dinner.
They do, they do, I, I didn't know to mention that. They do, they do, I didn't know to mention that. Okay.
Let's do that, okay. I made the motion that, you know, Ms. Frye remains as representative for the Western Area Tech and Technology Center, and also that, um, Kenny Grove serves as an alternate.
So, second.
Alright, we have a first and a second to appoint myself, Mr. Frye, as the representative, and Mr. Grove as the alternate. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Alright, motion passed.
I make a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Perfect, thank you. Um, yeah, we will... Eight oh eight. Let's do, we'll reconvene at eight twenty.
I think they just get so much on the plate.
Whatever this calls.
All right, you can now have order our regular school orders. All right. All right. You decide if you can get a little help. Mr. Dorstall.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Shingle. Here, President.
Here.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And we already had our prayer earlier, so we will, unless somebody else would like to pray, we could pass it up. Um. That's okay, that's all right. Yeah, we haven't had any since the last meeting, right? Okay, so we did not have any executive sessions that we had attended since last month's meeting. Um. Okay, our next item up is, uh, item C, motion from November twentieth of twenty twenty five, the solicitor RFP. The recommended action is to accept requests for proposals for solicitor for the McGuffey School District under the terms and conditions of the board. So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All right.
So discussion.
Yes, now we can have discussion.
Okay, I think it's always good to keep your options open. And unfortunately, you know, we're all aware that we go against our own policy with the person that we now have serving, and that's been an issue. But from what I've seen, and I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, but I don't think there's a really turnaround time on getting answers there. That's just what I've seen, I'm sure I don't know everything. So I think we definitely need, there's a need to look, to work. When I walk into sun, it's good, and we stay with that person. That's my thought.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, please.
All right.
So I would just like to respectfully remind the board that we just voted and there were all yeses, it was all yeses, that in the last meeting there, that meetings would be conducted in accordance with board policy. Uh, so as far as it goes for me, it doesn't really matter to me who the solicitor is. You know, if the solicitor is to serve at our will, uh, and they are being accountable to the law, really it shouldn't matter. So if the majority wanted or wants another, wanted another solicitor instead of Andrews and Price, you know, I was fine with that, it doesn't matter to me. I'm voting to open the request for RFP for at least one reason. So one board member called Ms. Hall and asked her if she would be, if she would be willing to be our solicitor without first obtaining a majority consensus to do so. And that is a concern to me in light of our district board policy zero zero two, which reads, quote, "The powers of the Board of School Directors are not vested in the individual school director. No such individual is authorized to act on behalf of the Board to carry out any of the Board's statutorily authorized powers except for those stated in law," period, end quote. The majority of the Board did not give that board member authorization to act on our behalf. So I'll be voting no.
I'm.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, um, first of all, not only did he not have directives from the rest of the Board, the rest of the Board didn't even know about it till after the fact. So the rest of the Board wasn't aware of it, let alone gave consent to it. And that, in our policy, is actually based upon law. School code is clear that there, the power of the school board runs from the collective, not an individual member. I find it, I said it then, I'll say it now, I find it appalling that not only did we have one board member who saw it fit to take that upon himself outside of the knowledge, consent, or direction of the rest of the Board, we had other board members who also saw no problem with it, and then we had a potential solicitor who also said she didn't see anything wrong with it. I've taken enough law classes to know that, and I work with attorneys every day, almost always the problem isn't not having a policy or even, um, the policy itself. Typically what lands organizations in court is not enforcing policies or enforcing them capriciously. Our policy is clear, is also based on school code, which is clear. That should never have happened the way it did. Should never have one board member who takes upon himself, as a board member, represents himself as a board member for all of us, especially to talk to somebody about potential employment, employment, getting paid for. And then on top of that, I will forever have a deep, deep lack of trust for any solicitor who advises that that's okay. In addition to that, I think the last five to six months have shown that it's hard to get answers. Um, we always have to check with somebody else at the law firm, and then it's kind of crickets until we get a reminder, by the way, you were gonna check in too, and then we get an answer. I'd like to have more immediacy there. I definitely think we should look at a solicitor that all of the board members collectively agree, let's take RFPs, um, where the majority of the Board agrees, and then let's look at our options and go from there. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to add, um, the accusations this evening about a board member going out on their own, it was asked about, uh, from both parties, both that individual and our current solicitor, and it was answered that the board member that spoke with the solicitor did not disclose that he was a board member of any school district. Our names are all public, our elections are all public, people know we, we serve on boards, that's a given, but it was asked. What happened, what was the call? And we were told, um, after the fact. We were told after the fact. Whether it was after the fact or not, we are still individuals that live in this community, and if we do not represent the whole Board, if we don't go to others and speak and say, "My name's Monique Frye from McGuffey School District," we are not representing the Board.
No, I'm sorry, that's just trying to circumvent the policy and the law and then to try to rationalize the circumvention, and people who agree with that, that's part of the problem. And we can, how many of us every day can talk, could complain about politicians who do those very things, and now we're gonna sit here and try to condone it?
Is there case law that supports how that was conducted? Is there any case law that says that the way this was done?
She just read the case law to you.
It's not the case law.
No, case law, it's T H code, and then of course our policy. I'm under the impression that if we do not introduce ourselves as representing the school board, as my name is Monique Frye from McGuffey School District, I sit on the school board, whatever, however you wanna word that, I'm just an individual, I still have my individual rights as a person in the community, as a person in the state of Pennsylvania and in this country.
To discuss a possible employment?
If I may, I'm addressing our solicitor. So with that said, if that did not occur, is there case law that shows that what happened wasn't doing anything wrong? So there wouldn't be case law that I'm aware of exactly on point with this situation.
Okay.
But there is case law about, you know, individuals on a board have a private life and you have a public life sitting on the board. I don't know what occurred, um, with my hiring because I wasn't a part of it, so I can't really speak to that, all I know is I interviewed and then I was hired by you all. So I can't, I wasn't in your executive session, I can't speak to it, so.
I will say though, we did ask you point blankly, did you think it was okay to go against our school policy, and you had, you did say, you stood there and said you saw the problem.
It don't, that was not the question.
That was not the question. That was the question.
I actually have it wrote down right here.
That was the question.
Based on the information that I know of how this came out, I did not see an issue with it. Um, I can't, I would love to know what the question was and whether it was leading and how that question played out to where you think that I think it's okay to violate school policy.
Well, you said it, you said it, so. I'm just.
If you wanna read the question out to me, go ahead.
Yeah, what's the question? Do you think it's okay to go against our school policy? And you stood there and told us, and I think, yes, it was okay.
I do not recall that question being asked of me.
Neither do I.
Mr. Thomas, you were the one that asked.
I asked a question, I have it wrote down right here, and that was just a wee little bit before you told me that I was going down the hypothetical highway.
Correct.
Which, like, that's everything that we deal in, like, we say, if this occurs, what could happen, like, that's your, that's like your day, but that's okay. So here is my exact question, I'm very thankful I found it, it actually didn't go on in my second statement as a result of it. So it was literally just what I shared with the group, just informing everybody of what, you know, policy zero zero two was. I said, in light of that policy, what would be your response to us as a, uh, us as a board to the statement that a board member which contacted you for the process did so as an individual and had not been authorized to act on behalf of the board? I then went right on to say, would you not then consider that a violation of board policy? And the answer that you gave me was no. I have it wrote down right beside it.
So I said I didn't consider that a violation of board policy, I didn't say you should violate board policies or I disagree with your board's policies. So the questions here, as I recall, and again, we're talking about executive session stuff here, but you know, we're obviously breaking that executive session, um, we're there. So, uh, there was quite a hypothetical given to me before that I cannot recall, um, because I saw it inappropriate and cut that hypothetical off. Um, the questions were compound, difficult to follow, and no, I would never say to violate your school policy, but I did not think that this situation fit into your school policy.
That's an interesting interpretation, and that makes me nervous.
It really doesn't matter, all we're asking is that we consider looking, for whatever reason, and maybe the board, the majority of the board would say, no, I don't wanna do it, you know, I have a choice to say that.
I think the majority of the Board has already voted that way, so I think we should move on with the vote.
We do have a new board, I do respect that.
Yeah, but the new board just had a reorganizational meeting.
Correct. All right, was there anybody else to discuss? All right. So the motion is to accept the request for proposals, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Um, I'm gonna, if I may, I'm going to ask for a roll copy. To accept requests for proposals to the solicitor.
Okay.
To take, basically, um. To take applications and.
Okay, yeah.
Into vernacular.
Mr. Grove.
No.
Mr. Hoover.
No.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Lager.
No.
Mr. Varnish.
No.
Mr. Shingle.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Fry.
No.
All right.
Madam President, before we move on, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
I would hope that in the coming year, that this board would be able to work collectively together towards common goals. Um. We've voted on this exact issue, I think, three or four times now, and I would hope that this is the last time that we hear of it because it's nothing but decisive, divisive. Um, the majority of the Board has spoken, and I would hope the minority of the Board would accept that decision as we move forward so that we can put this issue behind us once and for all.
May I speak? Yes. I think it's. Interesting, ironic definitely, that the sole person who's responsible for this situation, because he acts outside of the collective, is now advocating for cohesiveness. You generated an entire situation.
Yeah.
That just precipitated more distrust and a lack of trust, transparency in the process. It's gonna be hard to move past them. Especially when we struggle with moving past the other problems that came your way.
Thank you, Mr. Shingle, for reminding me the other problems that came my way. Um, I will one day be at liberty to speak in great detail about that other problem that you suggest, and, uh, I can't wait to do that.
You have the opportunity to apologize a million times.
All right, if I may, we're going to.
Deform.
Move on, yes, please. Um, I am going to make a motion to go back to executive session, um, or join to executive session for personnel, um, litigation and safety.
Second.
Thank you. Do we vote on that? Yes, okay, all those in favor of going to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye, any votes, any extensions? All right, let's be carried.
Team, okay, so, I think that might have been better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
That's interesting.
All right, we are back from executive session at 10:40 PM and we will start or continue our regular meeting. Um, all right, so we have our monthly action items. Um, we're going to go over approvals of November 20, 25 minutes. Um, approved the minutes of the November 20th, 2025 school board meeting as submitted. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Approval of the general fund schedule of bills. Approve the general fund schedule of bills from November 21st, 2025 to December 8th, 2025. Check number 81579 to check number 81637 in the amount of $436,000. Sorry, $435,254.41 as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Approval of food service schedule of bills. Approve the food service schedule of bills dated November 26th, 2025. Check number 7827 through check number 7829 in the amount of $2,168.92 as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Approval of food service schedule of bills. Approve the food service schedule of bills dated November 26th, 2025. Check number 7827 through check number 7829 in the amount of $2,168.92 as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, superintendent's report.
No, did we?
There's, um, did I skip a page?
No.
No, it's just the action items under that.
I see.
Every port perfect.
Gotcha, thank you. All right, um, team trip. Approve members of the McGuffey High School cheerleading team to travel to Orlando, Florida to participate in the UCA Cheerleading National Competition on January 20th through February 2nd of 2026 at no cost to the district.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I, can I mention something?
Oh, I'm sorry, gosh, I keep forgetting that guys.
Ms. Haberchuk, would, I get emailed because I was wondering just the inner workings of why we wouldn't spend budget money to do.
Sure. The one thing that we do set aside, we have athletic funds for athletic teams. Um, our internal district funds go for our Whipple sanctioned teams. This particular competitive tier is not currently board approved as a Whipple sport. So therefore, we have no budget set aside for the competitive tier. Now, moving forward, hopefully when we have a new AD, we can revisit that topic and, and the coach and the AD can talk about how to move this into maybe a different arena.
But this isn't anything new, like the bands, when they travel to Florida for club.
Correct.
Their boosters cover the cost.
Yes, so our district funds will pay for any Whipple sanctioned or PIAA sanctioned, which is in-state. The next action item I think you see is the wrestling trip to, to Virginia. That will all be covered through their fiscal organization.
Right, there are other, anything that's out of the state.
Yes.
I think I was just, we'll have to address adding the competition team as.
Correct.
As a sport.
Yes.
Probably have to approve it as.
Yes.
As a board at some point, because it's not.
It's not currently, right.
But to be clear, even if it were a sport, quote unquote, if the competition is out of the state, there is still nothing in the budget to cover.
Right, yes, right. But then you'd have budget money for in-state events, Whipple events, things like that. Because there are Whipple competitive tier teams, yeah.
All right, any other discussions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Permission for the varsity wrestling teams to attend the Virginia duel. The administration is recommending to allow the varsity wrestling teams to participate in the Virginia duel on January 8th, 9th, and 10th. The only cost to the district will be for one substitute for two days. Any discussion?
All four sportsmen. You know, you were saying that there's no, no money in the budget for the substitute?
No, 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 there's budget, there's money budgeted for substitutes. Just not the.
Yeah, right, I understand. But, you know, to clear up there, if there's no cost.
But I think the reason for that is because for the tier, none of the adults who are with, who are like coaching the team. Need a substitute. Whereas with the wrestling, there is one coach who is an employee of the district and will need a substitute. But that comes from a different line in the budget, correct?
Yes.
But it is in the budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Retirement, excessive retirement of employee number 925, parent educator, effective December 19th, 2025, and authorized the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. All right, discussion?
Thank you, thank her for her time.
Yes.
A lot of years.
Yes.
We appreciate all her work and commitment to the district.
Yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Business, real estate tax collectors bonding amount, approve the bonding amount for district real estate tax collectors for 2025 as presented. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I should have done that first.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Assessment appeal settlement. Approve a settlement in the assessment appeal for Sapphire Street Ventures Incorporated with terms and conditions approved by the solicitor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Administrative reports.
President, we had twenty-one uses in the month of November 4.
The pain, the pain, so. I think it's because they need to be kind of stuck in my head. I don't think that might have been better. Yeah. Yeah. Really? That's interesting.
All right, we are back from executive session at ten forty P M and we will start or continue our regular meeting. Um, all right, so we have our monthly action items. Um, we're going to go over approvals of November twenty twenty five minutes. Um, approved the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty twenty five school board meeting as submitted. All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Approval of the general fund schedule of bills. Approve the general fund schedule of bills from November twenty first, twenty twenty five to December eighth, twenty twenty five. Check number eight one five seven nine to check number eight one six three seven in the amount of four hundred thirty six thousand dollars. Sorry, four hundred thirty five thousand, two hundred and fifty four dollars and forty one cents as submitted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Approval of food service schedule of bills. Approve the food service schedule of bills dated November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Check number seven eight two seven through check number seven eight two nine in the amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty eight dollars and ninety two cents as submitted. All those in favor? Aye. All any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. All right, superintendent's report. No, did we? There's. And did I skip a page? No, it's just the action items under that. Every court perfect. Gotcha, thank you. All right, um, team trip. Approve members of the McGuffey High School Cheerleading Team to travel to Orlando, Florida to participate in the U C A Cheerleading National Competition on January twentieth through February second of twenty twenty six at no cost to the district. The second. All those in favor? Can I, can I mention something? I keep forgetting that, guys. Ms. Haberchuk, would, I get emailed because I was wondering just the inner workings of why we wouldn't spend budget money to do.
Sure. The one thing that we do set aside, we have athletic funds for athletic teams. Um, our internal district funds go for our Whipple sanctioned teams. This particular competitive tier is not currently board approved as a Whipple sport. So therefore, we have no budget set aside for the competitive tier. Now, moving forward, hopefully when we have a new A D, we can revisit that topic and, and the coach and the A D can talk about how to move this into maybe a different arena.
But this isn't anything new, like the bands, when they travel to Florida for.
Correct.
Their boosters cover the cost.
So our district funds will pay for any Whipple sanctioned or P I A A sanctioned, which is in state. The next action item I think you see is the wrestling trip to, to Virginia. That will all be covered through their fiscal organization.
Right. There are other, anything that's out of the state.
Yes.
I think I was just, we'll have to address adding the competition team as.
Correct.
As a sport.
Yes.
Probably have to approve it as.
Yes.
As a board at some point, because it's not.
It's not currently, right.
But to be clear, even if it were a sport, quote unquote, if the competition is out of the state, there is still nothing in the budget to cover.
Right, yes, right. But then you'd have budget money for in-state events, Whipple events, things like that, because there are Whipple competitive tier teams.
All right, any other discussions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Permission for the varsity wrestling teams to attend the Virginia Duel. The administration is recommending to allow the varsity wrestling teams to participate in the Virginia Duel on January eighth, nine, and tenth. The only cost to the district will be for one substitute for two days. Any discussion?
All four sports, but, you know. You were saying that there's no, no money in the budget for the substitute?
No, 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 there's budget, there's money budgeted for substitute. Just that, not that.
Yeah, right, I understand. But, you know, to clear up there, if there's no cost. There will be a cost to the district.
But I think the reason for that is because for the tier, none of the adults who are with, who are like coaching the team. Need a substitute. Whereas with the wrestling, there is one coach who is an employee of the district and will need a substitute. But that comes from a different line in the budget, correct?
But it is in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Um, additional substitute employee, approve William Stoller as substitute custodian for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Retirement, excessive retirement of employee number nine two five, parent educator, effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. All right, um, discussion? Discussion, thank you, thank her for her time. Yes. A lot of years. Yes. We appreciate all her work and commitment to the district. Yes. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. And any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Business, real estate tax collectors bonding amount, approve the bonding amount for district real estate tax collectors for twenty twenty five as presented. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Any discussion, I'm sorry, I should have done that first. Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Assessment appeal settlement. Approve a settlement in the assessment appeal for Sapphire Street Ventures Incorporated with terms and conditions approved by the solicitor. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, perfect. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Administrator's, administrative reports, facility use report.
Uh, President, we had twenty uses in the month of November four for community, uh, P T L facial meeting, P T L, show market fundraiser, meet basketball girls, basketball boys.
Thank you. Voice Burkhardt Kramer.
We do not have a report this evening.
All right, Western Area Career and Technology, um, feel like I'm caught off guard, I apologize. Um, we had the special Thanksgiving dinner last month. Um, we do hold a regular meeting and an executive session as well, separate from the dinner. Um, it allows us to bring one guest. Um, I took Zach with me, he thought it was great, he made best friends with Mr. Patel. Um, it was a good time, but, um, there wasn't anything as ordinary for a board meeting, all, all is well. Um, they did have the student of the month, I actually feel like I dressed this one at last month's meeting, I'm starting to remember now.
You did have a lot of, a lot of, um.
Attachments, yes, there were a lot of attachments, I forgot, we're only two weeks away from the last one. We haven't had another meeting since then, but that was the special dinner, we had the student of the month present. Um, so I apologize, I got lost in time there, but, yeah, so.
Our last Western Area representative at Thanksgiving dinner was the best day I ever had.
It can be. I mean, it's really good food, we'll put it this way, the first time I attended one of their meetings, it was actually the December meeting, and they made, oh, it was lamb. I can't remember what it was, but it was lamb, and I was like, oh, I don't know. I, I love lamb apparently, because it was the best thing I ever had, I, it, one of those things, or if it's cooked right, it's great. The food is always phenomenal there, I, it's amazing. All right, um, Pennsylvania School Board Association Report.
Um, there's just a couple of things, I, I just want to make mention that Charlie reminded us of those two, um, the sunshine law and, um. Yeah, and the right to know on the seventeenth, and I think that was in the list that I gave you last time. Also, coming up on, uh, January twenty first, there is a, a new health services webinar, if anybody is interested in that. There is a big A I implementation coming, no, that's next week, I, I'm not sure, but that's December the eleventh. Just a big reminder, and this is really big, you'll all be hearing about it. You are required to have the training, all of us are required to have the training, and this is where we get it, through the, uh, through the, um, P S B A. Please sign on to your My P S B A, and it'll tell you exactly what you need to do, and if you do the webinars, they are really easy, and you can do them on your own time. There are several that are away, and if you were interested in going away, there are five of them that are offered on site, and the school does pay for you to go there. Um, I did have the gates here, but somewhere in my mess here, it, they're lost. I will be giving them to you again, the site, if you're interested in going, I know what, the closest one's like a Grove City. And if you feel that you want, it is really worth the while, it's a, a whole day event, and it gives you all the information, where the other ones, you have to break them up into, uh, sections. But I think there's five that are, um, on-site visits, some of them are Kinney's Park and King Pers, King of Persia, I mean, they're, they're far, they're in the east. So, you know, just make sure that you're logging on to that P S B A site and looking at those. And I'll try to keep you up if, if anything else comes up new, and Charlie, and I appreciate your reminding them of those things that were on there also. For the new, uh, board officers, January seventeenth, nine o'clock to eleven thirty is a virtual, it, uh, meeting, it is for elected officers. So that would be like you two, that might be something that you would be interested in doing. Uh, then there's always something on there about safety, safety must be a concern for everybody. There's, they always, almost always have something available for safety. Thank you.
Appreciate it. With the, the five hour training that we have to do.
Yeah.
I, I, I know, looking at the schedule I have, does it matter, is there a timeline on how quick they want you to get it done?
I think it's by the end, by next December. It's, if you have a whole year.
You gotta hurry up.
It's a whole year.
Returning members have two, two hours.
Yeah.
They actually, they're not bad. When I, when I became board member, I became board member in, um, December before the pandemic. And then the pandemic came and they weren't doing any in-person, I would have loved to have done the in-person, they did them all virtual, they were horrible, but if you go for, like, they offer in-person trainings, I think they still do? Where you go and with everybody, they're much faster, and you get to talk with other board members from other places, it's nice. Yeah. All right, thank you. Policy Committee Report. Thank you. Um, I mean, you think it's all the same as last month, but. Well, this is a, a reminder, and also, um, for new board members, um, so that we're all on the same page. The next meeting is actually next Tuesday, December fourth at four P M, which will stay, because that was the advertised meeting, um, as part of the twenty twenty five calendar. So, um, that will stay. Um, also remember, um, that on last month, we have the first reading for policy six twenty six one, point one, for the travel reimbursement, and we had specifically asked that the second reading be, uh, held in June, or June, in January, sorry, I want to speak that year up, in January, uh, to give everybody time to really read it. Typically, what happens is the first reading will come out one month, and then you have that next thirty days for everybody to review it. Um, if you have any questions or concerns, you get, um, in touch with the policy committee, we can address those. And at the, at the next month's meeting, we would have, would come up for a vote. But because of the shortness of time between last month's meeting and tonight's meeting, we specifically asked that it be held to January. So in January, policy six, uh, two six point one for travel reimbursement will be up for a vote. I have not heard from anybody, um, so I'm assuming no news is good news, if you have a question or a concern, let me know. And the board is, the board has completed policy eight fifteen, um, which is on acceptable use of internet computers and network resources. And we actually had presented it to the board, and then we pulled it back off, um, because we are currently working on eight fifteen point one, which is use of A I. And they cross over so frequently that we thought it might be good, um, to wait in case we need to make any other changes to eight fifteen, um, as we go through eight fifteen point one. So that is what we are currently working on. We have a rolling, um, agenda, so at the bottom of the agenda are the list of agendas we've been asked either by board members or administration to look at. I did add policy, um, two hundred, yeah, zero, zero two that you asked me to, I did add that to that. Um, and so when we get done with one policy, whatever rolls up is the next one we look at, unless, um, for new board members, just that you're aware, if the administration comes to us and asks specifically for a policy to be reviewed because of the time constraint, that's how, um, six twenty six point one ended up on there, um, we do give them a priority. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we are, um, if you ever have any questions, let me know, but. All right, thank you. All right, public comment on non-agenda and agenda items.
Uh, President, no public comment.
You have to have a public to have comments. I'm just saying. All right, items for discussion. Do you think, oh, yeah, they can do stuff. Okay.
I have a long list. My opinion, I would like to see the administrators and supervisors attend our monthly board meetings. I would like to ask the rest of the board what their opinions are, and whether the rest of the board, what a opinion is that, uh, yield to their opinion. Um, and also, I'd like to see is how we have the monthly use facilities report. Uh, I'd like to have some type of monthly report on accidents. It doesn't have to have names or anything like that, but like how many we have, the severity of them or something like that, it can be vague. Um, and also disciplinary actions, um, suspensions, expulsions, whatever they may be, no names, just numbers, so that we can have a little bit of understanding of what's happening in those areas.
Just asking, would this just be like an average form of what the chief gives us at the end of year when he comes to do the.
Yeah, just on a monthly basis, yeah. Because I have no idea, you know, no, how many actions we have, or what our discipline is, or I just, just don't know. And if the rest of the board don't want it, well, that, that's fine with me. Those are the two that I have.
Administrators and who to attend?
Supervisors. Administrators and supervisors. They historically used to attend our meetings, if they don't anymore, I'd like to see them here personally.
I'd like to just address that, um, supervisors, administrators here, whenever they have presentations, typically for personnel, which is folks who are in the building. Um, I value their time out of the school, and this is one of the ways in which they did not have to remain here. The only time I actually ask them to be is if they are presenting something or if they ask a question of, and so that's always been the case.
Under your leadership, that's true.
It's always been the case, I, I don't want to hold them here if there's not a need for them, so that's why I've asked them lots of.
Sometimes they, they're not here.
Well, no, no, and again, they are here when they're making presentations, right, so I, I just don't, again, we're at eleven o'clock, and I want to be respectful of them, um, for that purpose, and that's why I've asked them my time here. Unless I'm asking you to be here, unless you want to, don't say you can't come, clearly, but I'd rather them have that time with family that's important, so.
And I would say, as a follow-up to that, I would concur, having worked in education, um, it's a hard life, uh, to be, way, especially for administrators, because they are away from their families so much, they put in more hours typically than just the eight to three, and I think it's respectful to give them that time. Um, when you ask them to come, they're here. Uh, I personally don't feel the need to require them to be here for every month, monthly meeting. I kind of like the idea, I don't, I don't necessarily require, um, but I like the idea because it gives us an opportunity to interact with all of them, and then they're a part of the conversation if need be, um, uh, under the direction or asked from Dr. Oberg, of course, but it just kind of, you know, just, that, that's my thought. But I, I totally understand, time is precious, so.
It's one of the things that, you know, I always tell them, family comes first.
Yeah, and maybe we can move towards.
So i- if you're okay with, I mean, again, I, if there is a need for someone to be here, absolutely, they're here, which is not, again, I'm just asking on their behalf, that that's, that is time, that's precious for all, and we got a lot of administrators with young families, and so, that's all.
I like it when they're here, but I didn't realize what the difference was, that you had asked them, I thought they just come up and came sometimes.
That's what I thought, yeah, yeah, either we is.
Yeah, they're, they're here when, when, when I need them to be in. And even when they're done, I tell them, after you've done presenting, like Teacher to Teacher or something, things like that, so, if that's a requirement of the board, I'll, I'll definitely carry it out, but I'd ask not for that particular reason.
I think it's hard to, to say, you know, we, we say we care about you, we care about the time that you have with your family, but we're going to require more time with you, I think.
And just moving to the other two requests, I think that's what I would do, I, I guess I'd ask, um, Ms. Paul, from extension to this point, is that more of an internal document that I'm not sharing at all?
Correct. I think it would be just like, uh, board Friday update, or, yeah.
I could do that once a month.
That's all.
Okay. All right, so that'll be end of the month, chief, we'll talk.
It doesn't have to be anything.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be anything elaborate.
Sure.
Just want to know if we're having any or if we're not.
Some of your checks.
I do that, I do that at the end of each month, my Friday.
Yeah.
You could do it even in the, where you do the building thing.
Why, it's not for me.
You want it to be on the agenda.
Oh.
I, I just.
Maybe, maybe I could say.
Could do that too. If I can just film it Friday, that way.
That'll work, that'll work.
Can we just put a pin in the administrator's attending? Yeah, I. Maybe we'll look to move towards something where we can get them. Yep, I definitely think we could put a pin in it, I, I agree with you, I like the idea of it, because it's not often, but sometimes there are questions that arise from the public or even from us that, you know, it.
And I will tell you too, and, and you know this, that if there's a question that's asked to somebody that's not present, I'll give that answer. You know, um, I, I, I took on this responsibility of the video and all that, because Mike, I mean, Mike's going to be on days like tomorrow, he'll be out in the rows checking in for me by four thirty in the morning. And again, I, I respect what you're saying, but like, I really want to protect them from this kind of thing, they don't have to be here, right, so, that's all, so.
Yeah.
It, it, in my opinion, it's just a way of the board to get to know them a little bit, um.
I think we should.
Seem like we've had some.
Explore other ways to get to know them.
That's the only time I've ever seen them, that they're not here, I guess, never, I don't know who they are. After, I wouldn't.
I think we should explore other ways that we can get together then.
This morning, I'll just give you, uh, for January already, uh, Mike will be here actually presenting, uh, on F R C P, his future property plan, you know, in three years. And the second item that we're going to be discussing is A I, and so he is looking to put together a committee, we're going to have, uh, family groups that come together and have experts come in that we've already sort of lined up. And so Mike will be the presentation of where we are in the next three years, just like last mid-month, we had, uh, Dr. Dodger, and we had Kelly Teener, the team that talked about attendance, so that'll be a rolling. So I will look to do more of that, and it's actually great for them to have that exposure with you to make this presentation, so I can definitely make that more intentional, to have more of the administrators come through that report.
And Dr. Oberg, I would even be willing to, uh, if they attend the meeting, they take comp time for the time that they're here. I mean, I don't want them spending time away from their family either, and I know all supervisors spend more time than they normally do, because that's a supervisor's role, but that's. We can discuss it another time, uh, next meeting or something.
All right, um, I, I had a, a, I guess, topic for this, because I know, I, I've mentioned it, that I, I would like to see at our policy committee meeting, some of these policies, especially with, with the A I policy that we're, we're visiting, there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of uncertainty, there's a lot of scary, there's a lot of unsure, there's a lot of everything with, with A I, and it is evolving incredibly fast, and there's a lot of bad with it, there's a lot of good with it. Um, I, I would like to request, if it, if it works with your schedule, that our solicitor attend our policy committee meetings. Not necessarily every single one, just the ones that like, this one specifically, there's, there's so much with A I right now, there's, there's lawsuits left and right about different A I programs, and I would really like for us to be legally informed on, you know, this is the first we're going to be doing anything with an A I policy, so I would like to request that, that that be something we could do. Um, our next one, of course, is next week, and we planned, yes, Tuesday, and we planned on talking about the A I policy, is that a meeting that you could attend, or should we? So I, unfortunately, Tuesday is next week, I'd have to be at another school that you're by five o'clock. Okay. But typically, I think you said either the second Tuesday? Yes, second Tuesday? Yes. So that board meeting for the new year that I actually will have next week has been moved to the third and fourth Tuesday, so my second Tuesday is open, so I'll have a conflict next week, but then moving into the new year, I should not. If you just want to let me know, or. I think, I don't know that we'd need the solicitor there for every. No, not everyone, this one, this one's really unnerving for, not just myself, but many in the community that our parents have the same conversations about the internet and, you know, the cell phones, and, and it just was, for me especially, but this is a whole different beast that we're approaching, it's way more than what we've ever approached, and I really just want to make sure that we're, we're legally guided along the way, really, is what it confounds me.
Can I ask, um, why the committee as a group couldn't come together and bring, pre, bring the questions and send them, because I don't need to sound me. and send them, because I don't need to sound mean here, but it is a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. That's not in the budget.
We get two meetings a month, though, so we have our meeting at night, and then she could attend the policy. Or it could be a situation where like, even our other committees, if there's somebody feels the need that you could attend, the request could be made that you attend, whatever coming, upcoming.
Well, I'm happy to review whatever you would like. Well, I thought that's always in the process, is that what we've been doing is we work on them, and then as we have questions, they get forwarded, typically through Dr. Oberg. Now, we can do that in a more direct manner if we want, we could, I could send out, you know, take everybody's questions, send out an email to the committee as well as Rebecca, and say, these are the questions that came up, and you could respond to them in that way. That's not an issue, but I would agree, if you want to take on more expense.
It's not more expense.
And then we would, obviously, we always have the solicitor review a policy before it's brought to the board.
Right, it's not more expense, though, we have two meetings a month, and we come to the regular meeting, which is one, so we still have a meeting that she could attend.
I'm just saying, we've now got three committees, so, you know.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, is even as we move along, others might want to come, so it could be one of those things where like, I might want her at this one until we finish this policy, or whatever it might be. And then as time goes on, if there's a need, I'm going to talk at another committee. So with that being said, and you can't make it to next Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I would like to at least, I don't, I'm fine with discussing our A policy, A I policy at next week's meeting, but I would like to ask that we don't put it up for review until we've had a policy committee where the solicitor can attend and perhaps address concerns.
We don't ever put a policy to the board for review and for consideration until after the solicitor has looked over it.
I'm not talking about looking over it, I'm talking about her attending the meeting, a policy meeting where questions.
Well, to my knowledge, we're not ready to put eight fifteen-one and eight fifteen to the board, you would be talking about putting them forward in January, I'll figure out when we get there next week.
That's what I thought we were going, that's what I thought the timeline was, and that's why I was.
Oh, no, our timeline is as we get it done, and this one, eight fifteen took us a while.
Yeah, it did.
Eight fifteen-one is going to take us a while.
Okay.
It won't be to the board in January.
Okay, I'll hold my calendar for this January, second Tuesday, and if you want me there, just let me know.
Okay.
I'll just hold on.
Thank you. Dr. Oberg, were you mentioning about the
Sorry.
The A I, as I always say, committee, but maybe we say task force.
So that's something that Mike said introduced at the January board meeting, is that he's going to put together a group of individuals, parents, administrators, teachers.
Right.
And what we're probably going to try to do is pair that up with a night where we actually have, actually have two experts that we've talked to, one is from Washington, crediting into the theater, making his information, and then they pair that with them, those that have interest from that meeting, be a part of that task force.
Great.
So what I'm saying was, you still have more meetings to attend.
Oh. I was all excited about the task force. I will be there at the last meeting.
We don't need to advertise the task force, right?
We could, but we'll look at.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Are you saying that the new committee, people don't take the seat until January? Because we ran them tonight, wouldn't they take the seat immediately?
I guess so.
So it would be, well, what's the A I?
So she decided, because, because this actually happened after, she was on the group for December.
Okay. Certainly they can, your policy permits anyone from the board to attend any committee, you think?
We did form a new policy. Um, yeah.
But the task force is exciting to hear, that it's coming in January.
All right, are there any other items for discussion at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I'm glad it worked.
Yeah, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm happy with that.
Yes, thank you.